Big thing about that, big.
No?
No.
Do try to play it all.
Yeah. Really? I'm gonna do it tomorrow.
Well, good evening. It is 5:30 and I want to welcome you to the Fannin County School System Regular Board Meeting. This is for September 11th, 2025. Want to welcome you that are in the building as well as you that are watching online. Hope you're having a great day and with that, Madam Superintendent, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on the agenda is to invite Mr. Mathis Ford to lead us in the invocation, please. And if you all would stand, remain standing. We're gonna have a moment of silence and then followed by the pledge of allegiance with Deputy Sirianni leading us in that.
I'll pray. Dear Lord, we just thank you so much for the opportunity to gather here this evening, God, and support this wonderful school system, God, that we're all a part of. Thank you for putting us all in these positions, God, and we just pray that you continue to use us in these positions that you have us in to love on your children, God. We know they're so precious to you and they're so precious to us as well, God. And be with all of our staff and everyone that's a part of this wonderful system, God. We just pray your blessings on them this evening, God. Be with this meeting, be with each of our board members and our superintendent, God. Just continue to give them the wisdom that they need to do, like I said, to be in that position that you've brought them to, Lord. And we do pray for our country and our nation during this time, Lord. We remember 9/11 and just all that's going on, God. It, there's a lot of things, but we do know, God, that you're in control, that you're on the throne, and we're just so thankful for that tonight, Lord. And just thank you once again for all your many blessings. Thank you for Jesus, our Lord and our Savior. In his name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Of course, today is September 11th and it's officially Patriot Day. Patriot Day is recognized in the U.S. as a legal official day in remembrance of the 2,977 people that were killed on September 11th, 2001, in the terrorist attacks. Please join me for a moment of silence as we remember all the fallen. Thank you. At this time Deputy Sirianni will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve the consent agenda and Ms. Collis will pull up the two sets of minutes for you all to review, in which I know that you all have had an opportunity to look at these prior to right now. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Board, we have a recommendation to approve consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor by raised hand. It is unanimous.
Thank you. And Mr. Chair, this is just a reminder to everyone here and everyone watching that all documents shared can be found on Simly by visiting our website and going to that link. Next item on the agenda is the 2526 Georgia Accrediting Commission, better known as GAC Certificates. And Dr. Ruth will present those. Dr. Ruth?
Absolutely. Good evening again, Board. Good evening, Madam Superintendent. So our school system remains accredited by two institutions. One institution is Cognia or Advanced Ed from the past. The other institution is the Georgia Accrediting Commission. So this allows our diplomas to truly mean something when those kids get their diplomas when they go across graduation. So Georgia Accrediting Commission, it is a five-year process. So every five years they will come on-site and we have to supply them with a lot of different documentation that shows that we are doing the job that we're supposed to do. And on the off-years, we have to supply a lot of that to them, you know, virtually or through, you know, they don't actually come on-site. But what these certificates do is they assure that we do continue to, again, have all of those different qualities, all those different attributes that are necessary to remain accredited. And there are different levels for Georgia Accrediting Commission. The top level is accredited with quality and our school system, along with all of our schools, remain accredited with quality by the Georgia Accrediting Commission. So with that said, we do have certificates here. The first certificate that we have is for the entire school system. So I'm going to present our superintendent, Ms. Dillard, with that certificate.
Thank you, Dr. Ruth.
And then we are going to get these other ones into the principal's hands and then we're gonna have a photograph. Is that correct? All right. First off, we have Blue Ridge Elementary School. Mr. Mark Young. Next, we have East Fannin Elementary. Mr. Matt Price. West Fannin Elementary. Mrs. Allison Danner. Fannin County Middle School. Dr. April Hodges. And Fannin County High School. Dr. Scott Ramsey.
There's a lot of hard work that goes into keeping all those boxes checked and loving on kids at the same time. So I appreciate each of you all for that. So. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is school happenings and so I want to invite Mr. Young Ford to brag on his school and all the people there. So come brag on Blue Ridge Elementary, Mr. Young.
We might need it before you're done.
Yeah.
Keep it short. Mine's almost done.
So, good evening, Board. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about Blue Ridge Elementary and all the good things that are happening there and this wonderful presentation we put together. This is our theme for the year and we are absolutely trying our best to make every child successful at our school in lots of ways, not just academically, but in other ways too. You'll see, we have some additions to the staff this year. We welcomed North Star onboard. They came over from East Fannin. Been a great addition to our staff and that's Mr. Sean Crump in the upper-left and Ms. Misty Burnett, Jennifer Tetherow and Gio Fernandini. And they have been a great addition to our staff. We also got Ms. Kim Payne. She's our new lunchroom manager. We appreciate her, nutrition manager, I should say. Sean Butler, he was our third-grade ELA and math special education teacher, doing a great job. Mr. Butler's fresh out of college, got lots of energy and lots of time and he's doing a great job. And then we had a couple of transfers. Maggie Hall was already at our school, but she transferred roles to school improvements, or school information specialist. And Ms. Ellen Fay came over from high school to serve as a parent professional. All of them are doing a wonderful job and we're glad to have them. We have some facilities updates and thank you, as always, to Splosh. We have new floor on our back hallway and many of the classrooms back there needed it really bad. There were some places in the floor, been there a long time and this is certainly a welcome addition. A lot of work went into that. They had to tear up all the old floor, but we do appreciate Splosh putting forth the effort and the money. Those of you who work hard to make sure that we continue to have that so that we can do upgrades like this. We really don't have any Splosh dollars on the playground, but if the grass is that green in August, I thought I needed to share that. It was really, it was really pretty this year. We had some mulch put out there and things looked good. Also, we purchased some cafeteria tables over the past two years. We've redid the cafeteria at Blue Ridge Elementary and we finished that up this year with some tables. All that was Splosh. And of course, we've talked many times about our weapon detection system. Just another layer of security that's really, we had a really smooth transition with that. Most of that's paid with Splosh, not all of it, but the majority. And that has been a wonderful thing for us and we've had great reviews and a really ease of operating. And we appreciate the extra layer of security. These are our sponsors and community partners, great list, and this probably doesn't do it justice. Those guys on the right have just walked up one day. The third guy from the right, his name is Jacob Boatman, and I don't know, you may know him. But he, he's the youth pastor, I believe, at First Baptist Church of Blue Ridge. So he walks into my school one day and he said, "Hey, I've got this ministry where we want to come out and work at your school and help you out." And I said, "Sure," and he started doing some work around the building and different things with the flower beds and raised beds. And they've been back and back and back and they come and work and do things that, you know, sometimes we just don't have time to get done and they can do maybe on the weekends. A lot of the folks are retired and they just want to get back to the community. So I really appreciate this, this kind of community involvement is great. And I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that in just a second. So let's get to the meat of the presentation and what I really want you to take home with you tonight and I want everybody to hear. In education, a lot of times we start, we talk about the end in mind. In other words, we look at what we want to accomplish and start planning backwards from there. And this is what the presentation that I want you to hear is about. Every year, we have a fifth grade class that we send to the middle school, Dr. Hodges, and we want that class to be the absolute best that it can be. We're gonna do everything that we can to make sure that they're prepared for the middle school. We try, you know, we think about high school, think about later in life, but truly, we want to have that product that we have ready for middle school, do what we can. And I begin to think about all the folks that have something to do with that. And you guys, you may or may not know this, but I'm gonna tell you. Every decision you make trickles down and has an effect on us to the smallest child, all the way down to pre-K and preschool, everything that you do here. Board of Education, our district leadership, same way. All the decisions that they make, they don't just affect a small group of kids, they affect everybody. School leadership, faculty and staff, the parents and guardians and the community stakeholders. You know what your role is and I'm gonna talk to you about that. District leadership, they know what their role is. And I want to say this about them, I appreciate their support. We know that Blue Ridge Elementary has struggled some in some areas lately and I really wanted to give a shout out to some folks about the support that we've received. Ms. Lauren Payne has taken over for Connie Huff and Connie and Lauren have both worked alongside of us and helped us in our struggles. Heather Collis, Dr. Lucas Ruth have all worked with us to try to help us get back where we need to be with our students with disabilities and I wanted to point that out. The whole district leadership team has been supportive, but those guys are the ones that have been boots on the ground for us and we appreciate that. But I want to spend the bulk of my time talking about our faculty and staff, parent and guardians and community stakeholders. So we have a goal of sending that product to the middle school that's the best we can be. So how do we get there? So one thing is stakeholder support. And when I say stakeholder, a lot of folks will think, well, that's people who contribute monetarily or somebody who may volunteer or something like that. But this is the one thing I want to say about our stakeholders. These are some pictures from Cricket on Night. Our stakeholders at Blue Ridge Elementary are not just folks that support our school with money or they don't just volunteer from time to time, but they're really working alongside of us and I appreciate that. They're not just talking to us about what to do, but they're coming into schools and they're working with us to help us so we can all work together and we're all pulling in the same direction. Much like the district leadership team, our community members are doing the same thing. We don't have a lot of issues with people just trying to tell us, "You need to do this or that." We listen to folks, but they come in and they actually work with us on our solutions and to get things solved. And I'll give you some examples of that in a minute. This is right here up in the upper-left-hand corner. That's our milkweed giveaway, I believe. And if you look at the people in the background, we have some faculty members there. But you'll see Kristi Gribble. She works for the Chamber of Commerce. Kristi is not just out there, you know, supporting us. She was digging holes with the kids. She's out there working with our students, with our kids, with our adults, side by side. On the right-hand side there, we have some special guests that come sing from time to time. Elementary kids in this day and time don't get to see a lot of live music, but these guys will come to cafeteria at breakfast and play the guitar and sing and do different things and it's a thrill for the kids. Again, they're in the school and they're working alongside of us and not just volunteering. It takes commitment if we're gonna get that going. It takes commitment on your part and I'm glad to see that you guys are committed to that, our district leadership. But it takes commitment on the part of our stakeholders and our teachers and our faculty and staff. If you look at these pictures, these are all things that are above and beyond. These are, these are not things that we find in the standards all the time, but these are above and beyond things. The pollinator count, we have folks like Jilda Lyon that works with us and comes along to help us with the pollinator count. The high school sends students down for that. We have the Farm to Table Initiative. The nutrition department is working with us. Little girl in front of the tomatoes there and also the bottom right. Folks are working with us and we're all pulling in the same direction and we know that that makes the difference. Absolutely. When you have folks that are all, have a common goal and they're pulling in the same direction, that's what makes the difference. We also have adults that are committed to after-school clubs. Our kids get to do things after school, extracurricular activities in elementary school. We have a running club and these are old pictures because we haven't gotten started yet this year. But in the upper-right-hand corner, that's our running club after school. And then we have archery club, investigative research club, robotics club, cooking club. All these things happen past the school day. They happen after the school day. They have community members. Some of these guys have folks that come in and work with them. And we know that we have a Star Trek team and cross-country team. We have a talent scout at Blue Ridge. I have to point her out every time. Her name's Carrie Mynear. And she can spot talent and she fosters that talent and these kids tries to help them learn to run and love to run. Obviously, I didn't get that when I was in school, but these kids learned to love those kind of things from Ms. Mynear. We also have clubs that focus on service and student service. And Ms. Ragsdale runs a couple of clubs, the Community Changers Club. They do things that, for everybody, not just the students. But if you look at that upper-middle picture, you'll see where students are out there at parent drop-off with signs and greeting people, things like that. All that's commitment from our adults to make sure that our kids are seeing that and seeing that service pays off, may not pay off in money, but it pays off in other ways. So I had to make sure that we show why we show up every day. Just wanted to throw in some pictures of our kids and having fun. These are this year's pictures and you can see our little pre-K and our students that are engaged in activities. Also here, we have some girls that went all out for a weather unit. That's more of our Farm to Table Initiative right there on the right-hand side. I mean, students that will take time to do this and parents, community members that will take time to help our students do this kind of stuff shows that we're all on the same team. This little girl on the bottom right here, I just can't help that. That's a wonderful picture. It shows you, you know, kind of how our students feel about Blue Ridge Elementary. We're blessed, very blessed, to have our kids come in and want to be there. It's not a struggle to get to, to have kids who are motivated to be at Blue Ridge. They like to be at Blue Ridge. And this is a few pictures of our recent events or events for the end of the year, or the beginning of this year, excuse me. Not the end of the year last year, but the beginning this year. This is our open house. Again, we had a wonderful turnout. I wanted to take an opportunity to thank our district office. They did a couple of things that were very good. We all talked about it and it worked together. Open house was a day prior to the day before school starting. It was not the day before school started. We had a day in between and that really gave the teachers an opportunity, meet their students and then have things to do with, get ready for make final preparations and they came for that time. Also, our kindergarten had a separate open house and that was a huge success at our school. Can't speak for anybody else, but we had a huge success. The kindergarten kids got to walk to school and be around when everybody else was not there and kind of get familiar with it, cause that, that could be the biggest building that some of those kids have ever been in before. First day of school is always an exciting time. You can see the picture on the left. Ms. Tori Arp there is working with our kids in STEM. Very first day of school, kindergarten's engaged in hands-on activities and old friendships are renewed, of course. Summer reading, we had, over the summer, Mr. Parker asked the kids to read and bring in a log that they've read X amount of minutes. And this year, he had the best participation he'd ever had. Forty-eight students met their goal over the summer and they had a celebration back at school. He credits the pizza for it, but I credit Mr. Parker. He's the one, he's a phenomenal media specialist. And again, this is another example of our stakeholders working alongside of us. They came in to train our kids, how to put the flag up, take care of it properly, what it means, what each fold means when they fold it. And the gentleman, Mac, right there on the left, he's been back four or five times at the flagpole just to make sure that the kids were taking care of the flag, taking care of getting it up properly and storing it properly. These guys, they work alongside of us and I really appreciate that, the fact that they're not just coming in and leaving, but we get to see those guys in the community. Our community's very blessed with veterans. I don't know if you know how much work these guys do, but they do a lot of work in the community. And then there's water day. We've had a water day and it's behind us. I'm glad to report we had no broken bones or anything like that, but we did have a good water day. It was a huge success. It is a reward for our students, for their behavior and everybody participates. We had, we've had a great beginning of the year, no issues and we really had a great time at water day. And these are just a few special moments from last year. We had our elementary science fair and our school brought home the winning project and we appreciate those boys right there. And then, of course, our state school superintendent, Richard Woods, visited to present all the schools with an award, but I thought that was a very special day, not just for Blue Ridge, but for Fannin County Schools. And I always like to end with a quote. Abe Lincoln is one of my favorites. "Commitment is what transforms a promise into reality. Commitment is the stuff character is made of. The power to change the face of things, it is the daily triumph of integrity over skepticism." Now, I appreciate that. Does anybody have any questions?
Did you participate in the water day?
In some form, yes. I supervised.
Supervisor, huh?
I think they need to get you in one of the bumblebee outfits.
Oh, I don't think there's enough stripes to do that.
Great presentation, though.
Yeah, and that, one of my favorite pictures, I can't, it says little big faces with those, with those socks, goggles on it, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Danner, I believe we have public comments, sir?
Yes, ma'am. Our first public comment is Ms. Jackie Self. She'd like to speak on MEC closure and night school and the need for night school.
Ms. Self, welcome and thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to come and see this beautiful facility. I hate to admit, this is the first time I've been in here, so thank you. So as he said, my name is Jackie Self and I am here today as a parent of a student at Mountain Education Completion School, which we call MEC. I want to share my story and my son's story with you because it shows just how important this program is to families in our community. I'm a lifelong resident of Fannin County, just like you all are. I'm a 1998 graduate of Fannin County High School. I'm a graduate of Kennesaw State University. I'm a licensed Georgia CPA, but most importantly, I am a wife and a mother of three children. One of my children attends Fannin County High School and he's a senior this year. The other child, my oldest, he attends MEC and I want to tell you a little bit about him. His name is Eric Sebold and he is 18 years old. He is a kind-hearted, hard-working and unique child. Traditional school was never the right fit for him. He attended East Fannin Elementary and one year of the middle school, but after sixth grade, he begged me to homeschool him. He struggled, both academically and socially, because he is different. So let me explain what I mean by different. Eric spent the first eight years of his life with his grandfather, Bobby Long, in the hayfields, working on his farm and at his rock quarry in Jasper, Georgia. By the time he was five, he could drive tractors and excavators. By the time he was seven, he was baling hay, moving trucks and repairing equipment. He grew up with real-world, hands-on skills that shaped him into the young man he is today. When my father passed away, Eric did not have these opportunities anymore and began to struggle in school and in his social life. I've always said he has more in common with a 70-year-old man than with a child his own age. Now, Eric works 35 to 40 hours a week at Joe's Car Wash as the assistant manager. He oversees staff. He does all the repairs on both locations for Joe and for the company. He still, even working that much, goes to school four nights a week by his own choice. He attends MEC at the high school. For the first time in his life, he enjoys going to school. He is thriving academically, earning As and Bs, and just as importantly, he's found friendship and encouragement there. MEC has given him hope. This is why I am here. To remind all of us, MEC is not just a night school for dropouts or troubled teens. It tends to get that label and that's just not true. It's a safe, supportive place where students of all kinds, students who don't fit the mold of traditional school can finally belong, learn and earn their diplomas. Without MEC, many of these kids will lose that chance. I also want to point out something we all know too well. For decades, people in Fannin County had to drive out of town for everything. Walmart, healthcare, basic services, we all had to go in different directions just to get those items. Things have changed here over time, as we all know as well. I don't feel that it's fair to ask the students to drive 20 miles away to finish high school. I've spoken with MEC Assistant Superintendent Joe Cash and I understand that enrollment is down because students are no longer being referred from Fannin County School System to their program. I know the impact school you created was created out of uncertainty, but now we have an opportunity. So I asked this board and Ms. Dillard to please consider a way to keep a night school program going, whether that's by renewing referrals to MEC, as has been done since 1993, or by offering impact classes at night. With Fannin County School System's $87 million revenue budget, surely a small portion can be allocated to the '26-'27 school year to give students an surely a small portion can be allocated to the '26, '27 school year to give students an option. And if not, then at least let's send enough referrals to MEC so that they may return to our county. I would ask each of you to take time out of one of your evenings and go to the night school. I think you would see firsthand how special the school is and what MEC offers. Your school system is great, but it can't offer the things that MEC offers those children. In closing, first let me thank you for supporting MEC for the past 32 years and for listening to me tonight. Most of all, thank you for considering the children, students like my son, who need a different path to succeed. I hope you will fight for them and for their chance to finish their education and receive their diploma that they need and that they are working so hard for. Thank you very much.
Ms. Self, thank you so much for your advocacy. I appreciate you.
Ms. Dillard, our next public comment is Ms. Erin Arp. She's also want to speak on MEC closure.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Arp.
You're welcome. I'm Erin Arp. I'm a parent of an MEC student who's on the verge of graduating. I was on the fence about coming here tonight or what to say because I work very closely with some of the staff depending on what cases are going on. But I myself went to night school when I was growing up and I went and graduated if they didn't have that option for me. When Judge Rooster, God rest his soul, found out that my child was enrolled in MEC, he was more excited than I thought he was going to be about a basic, you know, chit-chat when I'm trying to get something signed by him. And he was ecstatic and he went on and on about the benefits of MEC. He was a scholarship contributor as well and was just elated that he knew someone else that was taking advantage of that opportunity. I serve the same residents that all the school serves. I serve those same families. My role as serving them is much different, I'm law enforcement, so I usually see them on their worst day or they're having what they feel their worst day in their life is. But I'm also the voice to the parents on those days to try and help them figure out where to go from here. I try and help them find the best solution, especially if it's something that happened in school or with students who go to that school. And MEC has been really the only option for night school in Fannin for families who have gone through a trying time in their life, until the Impact School started two years ago. When I heard MEC was closing this school year, I did my own investigation because my child goes there and hopefully will be graduating to figure out why it's closing and how we can stop it. Among many phone calls to various people in departments, I've learned that about two years ago, legislation changed for MEC that made them a completion program as opposed to a school. On the heels of that decision, Impact School was put in place because it was so wishy-washy, they weren't sure what legislation was going to do. Impact provides smaller classes and online courses which benefit the school and their learning ability, benefit the student and their learning ability. However, Impact does not have the same option for night school. The start of the Impact School meant that there was competition for student enrollment now in the same county as MEC's Fannin campus. I spoke to Georgia State Board of Education and they advise that in an area where there's competition, MEC or another charter will usually just leave. It doesn't mean that there's bad blood. It doesn't mean it's a bad working relationship. It's just the nature of the beast if there's competition to get referrals. They're not, you know, they don't want it to turn ugly. Union County has both. They've managed to make it work. They've got both an Impact, a version of an Impact, and MEC and they make it work. But the very final nail in the coffin was non-referrals. That's what killed the night school for this county. And I understand that the idea of the Impact School came from a servant's heart to have something here for the students in case legislation makes it even harder for programs like MEC to be successful, but Impact cannot provide what MEC can provide. There's even a requirement to stay in the program to have at least a B average. My kid is a Navy student because of that requirement and because of the one-on-one classes. The MEC night school program provides evening meals at no cost to the students residing in Fannin County. They assist with transportation if needed for the students. There are awards and financial benefits for those awards, for those same awards that the students can achieve each year. There are scholarships and that these students can obtain without the competition of a huge student population. Some of these students are not athletically or musically gifted. Some of them will not be a valedictorian, but they still have an opportunity to receive a financial blessing anyway to help them further their education past high school. While Fannin Day School offers scholarships, the ratio of student to scholarship is vastly different than the ratio of student to scholarship at the night school. They've just got a better opportunity. For families in Fannin County, that's a huge blessing that they can receive and they don't have to pay for it. Residents still pay their property taxes that benefit the Fannin County School Budget, but their kid may go to MEC or a charter program. That's what I do. So I pay for property tax near Salem area, but my kid goes to MEC. As a civil servant, which I'm sure you guys can kind of sympathize with, I pray that my kid gets a financial blessing to further after high school. School employees in my agency all know what goes on behind the scenes at schools and what goes on with student behavior nowadays. Some kids can't show their faces at school anymore. Some make their own bad decisions. Some are bullied. Some don't want to go to a high-population school. Some need smaller classrooms for more one-on-one teaching. I have worked with all kinds of people, from people who are just very poor and need their student to work during the daytime to help the family to...
You go ahead, Ms. Dennis.
Thank you. Last paragraph. But I've worked with people who are very poor and just need their student to work to help with the family, to help financially, to a child that was almost lost to human trafficking in the last three years. And he had to go to work at night to be able to pay for his own food and room and board, or he would have been sent off to, we don't know where. But he was able to go to school at night and work in the daytime. So there, and those families aren't here tonight. They're not going to make their kids plight, whatever decisions they made, whatever happened, a public speech. They're not here. But the financial blessings that are offered, the small classes that MEC offers, if there is a night school put in place other than MEC, needs to have the same flexibility honestly as MEC, the same operating hours as MEC, small classes like MEC. But I don't foresee Impact being able to have the same financial blessing that MEC can offer. So we're, as parents, we're very thankful that MEC has had the opportunity to have the school, the building for free for the last half of the school year and we appreciate the idea of Impact. But if MEC is better, then it might need to be reevaluated for the residents that live here.
Thank you, Ms. Arp, so much. Thank you. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is construction and facilities update. Mr. Daner?
This at the baseball field at the middle school, which is where the high school plays. If you'll notice those, looks like camouflage there. That's cap blocks that was rotting and all that type of stuff. Go ahead, Ms. Collis. Those have been replaced and so again, all the cap blocks is completed there at the middle school. The backstop netting has been ordered. Windscreen has been ordered and the guts to the scoreboard has been actually ordered and received. And again, when it gets closer to baseball season, we'll go and redo the scoreboard for the final season for the high school to be there and then be in preparation for the middle school, baseball, softball complex, whenever that is completed. Construction, a lot of pictures there. And while Ms. Collis is scrolling through, there's one area, Ms. Collis, you just keep right on trucking. They will start on the bleachers supposedly next week if everything goes as planned. That's underground pond number three. Go ahead, Ms. Collis. 121 feet by 54 feet wide by 16 feet deep. A whole lot of water. Again, that's number three. Grading for the tennis courts has begun. Actually, that begun this week. So again, cannot get pictures on it. So again, there's been a ton of dirt moved from the tennis courts actually to the show barn. The show barn got started this week. They've raised the road going to it. Was grading for the pad today. So again, the show barn will be start going up there very soon. We're still waiting on materials in the building to come in place. But again, everything is still on track for completion. There's light poles. Go ahead, Ms. Collis. There's a visual side parking lot. If you've not been over there lately, we've lost some asphalt. Downstairs of our Athletic Performance Center. And then upstairs of our Athletic Performance Center. Things are moving on quite well. Weather, again, no rain in sight for next week. That is almost three-quarters of a mile from the back corner of the property before it goes up, looking at the Athletic Performance Center. But I actually had to take that one picture there for Ms. Williams. Ms. Williams, I don't know what type of cattle that is, but again, he just had to get in that picture. All I know is it's black and it's hamburger, so...
Then it'd look better on a plate.
It'd look better on a plate, that's true. That's it, miss.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Mr. Daner. The next item on the agenda, Mr. Chair, is to approve the 2025-2026 Fannin County Board of Education Local Board Training Plan. Dr. Reeves?
Good evening again. So this is something that we are required to do by the Georgia Department of Education where we have to announce to them the number of hours and the types of trainings that we're going to go through each year. So this year, each of you will be going through 12 hours of wonderful training. There are topics there, three hours for each. And I do want to point out though that for anybody that's listening to this, that the way that we are accomplishing these hours, accomplishing these trainings is by our board members getting an opportunity to visit schools and get into our schools. And we will be able to accomplish it that way. We'll have opportunities again to venture into these topics on days where we go into the school. So the first day that we're doing that is coming up on September 23rd and then we'll do it again in March on either March 3rd or March 5th. There are some boards across the state that take all their hours and get all their hours by going to conferences and by doing things where, you know, you're not spending time with the kids and the teachers and with the people in the schools. And so I do want to commend y'all for doing it this way and loving the opportunity to do that, to get into the schools to do it, so with that said.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve the local board training plan as presented.
Board, we have a recommendation to approve Fannin County Local Board Training. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to approve that training.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Is there any discussion? All in favor, by raise hand. It is unanimous.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to approve the fiscal year '27 capital outlay projects application for CTAE. Mr. Daner?
Thank you, Ms. Dillard. In July, I asked the board for permission to apply for a COPS grant, COPS application to help build a new CTA facility. In July, the calculations was $1,633,243 that y'all give me permission to apply for. So this is the actual true application. The actual dollar amount went up to $1,644,444. It's already been approved by the DOE, so now it has to be approved by the board that we will accept this COPS application. And again, the COPS application is a reimbursement program from the state of Georgia through legislation. It will, again, it's F527, but again, that's where the hoops you got to jump through to ask for money. It's for a year in advance and, but things are moving quite well also on the new CTA as well. So with that said, Ms. Dillard, with that approval, we could use that money to help build a CTA facility.
Excellent. So with that said, Mr. Chair, I make your recommendation to approve as presented.
Thank you, ma'am. Board, we have a recommendation to approve the fiscal year '27 capital outlay application. Do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any discussion? All in favor, by raise hand. It is unanimous.
Good money.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve to declare West Fannin Elementary School furniture as surplus. Mr. Daner?
Yes, ma'am. Wes Fannin has requested that the following equipment and actually following furniture there be declared as surplus. There's some pictures there evolved on it as well. No, go back to that, Ms. Collis, I want to use this that. Go ahead, scroll down. 203 student desks, 505 chairs. Just keep scrolling there, Ms. Collis. So again, this is surplus. So again, the items are somewhat usable. So again, if the board approves to declare it surplus, now, Ms. Collis, we will use GovDeals, part of our DO-R1 per regulations. To do that, put it on GovDeals. It goes on the website for four weeks, then it goes on GovDeals. If nobody bids on any of these items, request that they be declared as salvage. And then what we can scrap for metal, we will and/or just discards.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chair, I make your recommendation. And Mr. Daner, it's my understanding that you're requesting surplus to go on GovDeals for four weeks to sell. And then if it doesn't sell, go ahead, you're, we're asking the board to go ahead and let that be declared as salvage.
That is correct.
Okay. Mr. Chair, make your recommendation to approve as presented.
This board, we have a recommendation to approve to declare the West Fannin Elementary Furniture as surplus. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Sir, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second. Any discussion? I want to know, did the three witch hats go that's in page six?
We will discuss that with Wes Fannin admin. If they want to get rid of those, we'll add that to the... If I had to get us some bids on it, absolutely, absolutely.
All in favor, by raise hand. It is unanimous.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve to declare Fannin County Middle School equipment as salvage.
Now, this is salvage and not surplus. So again, Roman Chemicals is our company that does all of our services on our buffers above and beyond what maintenance can do. So again, this Power Flap PB2113 burnisher has been, has served its time. So Roman Chemicals said it's beyond repair. So again, Dr. Hodges sent a request to get rid of this machine and to do that, we just need your approval. So again, we will scrap it as much as possible and then just, and get rid of what we don't, what we can't have.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Thank you, ma'am. Board, we have a recommendation to approve and declare Fannin County Middle School equipment as salvage. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to know what a burnisher is.
It's a block of floor machine. I don't know if it's a buffer or a cleaner or something, but it is a floor machine.
Is that it? All in favor, by raise hand. It is unanimous.
Ms. Dillard, before I forget, Maintenance Apartment 477 completed documented work orders since July 1st.
Thank you. They have been working very hard. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve the Department of Health Memorandums, plural, of understanding. Ms. Williams?
Good evening, Board. Madam Superintendent, of those 477 work orders, only 475, I feel probably nutrition. Our maintenance team does an amazing, amazing job for us. They just don't get enough credit. So there are two memorandums of understanding that each year we must approve, both between the Fannin County School System and the Department of Health. The first MOU is for our use... The first MOU is for our use of our facilities. So should there be an emergency event, this MOU sets forth the process for us to open up a school to help our community. And the two designated schools on this MOU are West Fannin is the first, or actually Fannin Middle is the first, and West Fannin is the alternative. And so that would allow for us to do anything between feeding, immunizations, any kind of catastrophe. The second MOU is in result of the Official Code of Georgia 20-2-772, which calls for public schools to screen students who are at high risk for scoliosis. And this MOU allows for our health department to work with our nurses and us to screen those populations together and to send home follow-up letters for students who do have any kind of signs that they may have scoliosis. So do any of you have any questions about the MOUs? We just do this every year to have those in hand should we need them, and we go forward with them.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. With that said, um, I'm, make a recommendation to approve both MOUs with the Health Department, one for, um, crisis, um, placement and one for scoliosis screening. I make that recommendation.
Thank you, ma'am. Board, we have a recommendation to approve Department of Health Memorandums of Understanding. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the Department of Health Memorandum of Understanding.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, by a raised hand. It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to approve the West Fannin Student Activity Account for June 2025, the Revised Edition. Ms. Winn?
Okay, um, you're gonna, you can go ahead and do the West Fannin, then we'll go back to the final.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is, uh, the Revised West Fannin Elementary School. In closing out the year, we had a small change. It was about $245 on their statement, so, uh, those are the updated statements for West Fannin, uh, for July 1st through June 30th, 2025.
And?
For West Fannin?
Yes.
And that was the only school that had any changes?
Correct. And it was just, I was gonna get you to do, it was just a slight clerical error.
Yes, it, it was like $245 change.
Yes, thank you very much. All right. Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Board, we have a recommendation to approve West Fannin Elementary School Student Activity Account, June 2025 Revised. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, by a raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to approve the Final District Financial Report for June 2025.
So we have completed, um, all of the June, our final statements and transmitted everything to the state. So on our general fund, you can see that we are, uh, 100% completed. In revenues, we received 99.69%. We spent 95.10% of our budget. And to give you a more detailed update, at the beginning, July 1 of 2024, our fund balance was $33,402,450 and change. We, so, in, with those revenues and expenditures, we ended up with ending fund balance of $31,867,429. So we spent $1,535,020.55 of our fund balance last year. And that was due to all the increased costs with health insurance and everything. So that's completed finalized reports for the general fund, and then we can move to capital projects. And so we have our capital projects, and so that's complete, all the revenue was, for SLOSS was 11.431 million, and then our capital projects expenditures, and you can see that we had eight, over 18 million in construction. And then we have our special revenues. And these are the special revenues, which is all of our funds except for the school activity funds. Those funds, I've separated on, on the next page because we don't have budgets for those. So that way you can actually see, these are the Title Ones, all the federal funds and pre-K. And then our next page, that is presented the same way. It's all of the student activity accounts for the entire year. And then next, we have the special, um, school nutrition.
Excellent. Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Thank you, ma'am. Board, we have a recommendation for the Final District Financial Report, June 2025. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Born. Is there any discussion? All in favor, by a raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. And you can tell it's been a busy financial season. Ms. Winn, next item on the agenda is to approve the District Financial Report for July of 2025.
So this is our first month of the 26 fiscal year. Um, you will notice that there's not as, as many expenditures because we are also paying, in July, we're paying salaries that were earned in the prior year, so they've all been included in those other, um, statements. So that's our revenues and expenditures for July for our general fund, and then we have our capital projects and our special revenues and our school nutrition.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I make your recommendation to approve as presented.
Board, we have a recommendation to approve District Financial Report, July 2025. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Born. Is there any discussion? All in favor, by a raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is for information purposes only. Ms. Winn, will you, um, share the 2024 sales ratio study with us, please, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am. So we can go, I think it's about the fourth page on this preliminary sales ratio, and that gives our equalized ratio, um, which is 39.33. And so to give you the best score, I think it needs to go, maybe I've said the wrong, yeah, Fannin is 39.33. Um, it's hard to see from this, this direction. The best score would be from 38 to 42. So 40 is a perfect score as far as the digest. So that just says what a great job that the Tax Assessor's Office has been doing in valuing property. So that's what this Department of Audits wants to see, um, when they do those sale ratios studies each year. And then that's just all of the counties, then it shows, shows the total state digest in that value. And then the next document actually shows all of the properties that the Department of Audits used to, to complete their sales ratio study. So that's kinda like all of their work papers. So it shows actually all the different, the totals of those parcels and then how they rated, and then it actually drills down to the actual addresses and everything, if anybody wanted to study those.
Excellent. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for sharing that. I'm very proud of our partnership with, um, the county.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve the UGA Cooperative Extension, better known as 4H Bus Use Requests. Mr. Drury?
We skipped 18.
We skipped 18.
Good afternoon, Board. Madam Superintendent.
18 approved UGA Cooperative Extension 4H Bus Use Request.
That's 19 on mine.
It's 18 on mine?
Okay, it's 18 on mine.
All right, so what do we do?
We, we are approving or recommending in just a minute, 4H field trips.
There you go. Go ahead.
Okay, we'll do the field trips. Okay, so, yeah, one of our partners, uh, the 4H has requested, uh, the use of our buses and, uh, drivers to, uh, take some trips for 4H. Uh, the trips are Friday, October 10th. They'll be traveling to the Georgia National Fair in Perry, Georgia, and returning back to Blue Ridge. Uh, then Monday, October 11th, uh, they will go to Cloverleaf Conference, uh, in Delano, Georgia, and return back to Blue Ridge. And then the last one would be Saturday, uh, December 6th, uh, to go, uh, back to Cloverleaf District Project, which is, uh, this one's just in Union County and travel back to Blue Ridge. And, uh, they will be responsible for, uh, the cost of the fuel and the driver.
Excellent. Mr. Chair, I make that recommendation.
Thank you, ma'am. Board, we have a recommendation to approve the UGA Cooperative Extension Bus Use Request. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, by a raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to approve purchase of school buses. Mr. Drury?
Okay, uh, yeah, if you'll, this document here just shows, uh, the, the bill sheet for our buses. Uh, if anybody's interested, uh, it shows every nut and bolt of a bus that gets built. Uh, and of course, we've got some things highlighted people may be interested in. We do, uh, add some things to our buses to make them safer and, and better for our students and our drivers, uh, such as our buses, of course, uh, have air conditioning. We add, uh, what we call now the new Intellabreak System, which is a, a safety feature that's on our buses, uh, rear cameras. Uh, we also, uh, uh, think, you know, we have Mr. Denver Foster who knows buses inside and out, and he does some, uh, upgrades to our engines and to our, uh, our gear ratio because of being in the mountains, our buses need to be a little bit different than on flatland, so, uh, so we add those things. Uh, and with our buses, we, we try to keep our fleet, uh, we try to do a few buses each year because we don't wanna have to buy 30 buses at one time because that would become very expensive. So, uh, we try to rotate our buses. So this year, uh, we're asking and recommending that we, uh, purchase five 72-passenger buses. Uh, these will be C2 buses, which are made by Thomas Bus Sales. Uh, the purchase price of each bus is $159,900. Uh, and this will also include the installation of our REI camera system. We have a camera system for inside and outside of our buses, uh, which comes in handy sometimes, as we found out the other day. Uh, but, uh, we, uh, and then two ra, radio systems included in that cost as well. So the total cost will be $799,500, which we paid out of SLOSS. All buses are purchased using a statewide contract with the depart, with the Georgia Department of Administrative Services, DOAS.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Thank you, ma'am. Board, we have a recommendation to approve the purchase of the school buses that's been presented. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any discussion?
I got a question, like, uh, or we got like a program where we rotate stuff out and auction off the?
Yes, so probably at the next board meeting, I'll be doing, uh, like Mr. Daner did for West Fannin. We'll do a, uh, where we would ask the surplus buses, some of our older buses. We're currently, uh, we have some old international buses that will, these are like 2010 models. Uh, right now, our, we're oldest route buses are 2015. We like to try to keep a 10-year window on our buses that we run every day, uh, and then we keep the sub buses. So like, our 2013s are our sub buses right now. And so we'll, we'll, we'll start, you know, putting some of those buses on GovDeals and, and, and try to keep, you, you don't, you wanna keep some sub buses, so, so it's, we definitely wanna manage it well.
It's at our discretion, though. There ain't no?
Yes, yes. It's, 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 you know, at some point, you gotta look at, you know, we look at the cost of what we're putting back into them versus just go ahead and, and surplus them.
How many, how many buses are in our fleet?
In our fleet, we, we run on a daily basis 35 buses. We run 28 regular school buses, seven, uh, special needs buses. Total buses, we have 50 buses, uh, technically, we probably have 54, but those are the buses we probably wanna surplus. I'm not really counting those, but, and then we have two activity buses. Uh, those are the white buses. Uh, you cannot use those buses on a route. Uh, there can only be from, uh, you know, a, a parking lot to a parking lot or a house, so, but we do have those two buses. You do not have to be a, uh, CDL driver to drive those buses. So we actually have a lot of, uh, you know, teachers, different folks that, we have a program they have to get trained on and, and some things they have to do, but that allows them to drive in, which is a huge help to Transportation Department.
And I think we had some discussion about this before, but we're buying how many buses a year?
My goal is five buses. That's the sweet spot for us. Uh, so like, if we buy these five buses, that will, uh, we'll be able to roll our, our rest of our 15s and 16s into our sub pool, which means we're in that 10-year window of, of our, of our buses.
And we had a delay at some point on getting those, and so this is looking like?
Yes, sir. Uh, we, we, we end up buying IC buses, special need buses, last year because of the lead time of buses. But our fleet is mainly Thomas buses, which helps us with continuity of parts and all that stuff. So they've been able to get their manufacturing lead time down, so, uh, we've been assured that hopefully these are going, build time will be sometime end of December, so we hope to have them in the spring is, is, is the goal, which for us is, is a good time to get them in.
Yes, sir. Thank you. No more discussion? All in favor, by a raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
Thank you. And I wanna clarify the confusion just a minute ago. I am using paper and on the electronic form, somehow the agenda items are the same, but they just switched numerical order. So it doesn't change the integrity of the approved agenda, just the order of the presentation. So it took me a minute to figure out what was going on, and yes, I panicked for a minute, Mr. Patterson, so thank you, but that was what happened. So. With that said, Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is personnel, and if you all will open your personnel sheets, please. Everybody ready? All right. First, um, item on the personnel sheet is a resignation, and, um, that is Ms. Patsy Wood retiring effective 10/31/2025. Mr. Chair, make that, um, recommendation for that resignation.
Thank you, ma'am. Board, we have a recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. All in favor, by a raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Can I make a motion and second it, or is that not allowed?
No, that's not allowed.
So you're gonna have to slow your roll just a minute there, Mr. Patterson. So next recommendation is pending completion of paperwork, background check, and training requirements. And this is for, um, Carson Collis, classified position effective 9/15/2025. Mr. Chair, I make that recommendation.
Thank you, ma'am. Board, we have a recommendation, so I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, by a raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. Next recommendation is for substitute employees pending completion of paperwork, background check, and training requirements. Um, one lady on here was gonna do full, but she wants to do substitute now, so that's the first lady. And if no one complains, I'm gonna take both of these collectively, okay? Um, and that is Angelika Fredrickson for substitute transportation, and Randy Richardson, substitute school nutrition and custodial, both effective 9/15/2025. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Board, do I have a recommendation or a motion?
So move.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, by a raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. The, this next set is, um, very special, and, uh, I believe we might have them with us. And this is recommendations for the student work program and to reflect back to, um, informational session and the work session. This is, um, for our students that are part of teaching for a pathway that's gonna do the, um, I call it a baby internship, or student workers, um, so they're gonna be able to work with our students in kind of a peer, um, pro situation. And all these are pending completion of paperwork and school program requirements being completed. And I'd like to take these collectively if there's not an objection. Okay? And these are all, again, student workers, all effective 9/15/2025, and that is Ms. Caitlin Clark, Hollyanna Green, and Baylor Twix. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Board, we have a recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, sir. All in favor, by a raised hand? It is unanimous.
Um, Mr. Chair, can I have, um, a moment to recognize those three young ladies that's starting? It's gonna be the initial start of this program, and, um, Mr. Chad Tiedem is gonna be their mentor and supervisor, and he wanted to be here to not be had another obligation.
They've endured our meeting. I think we can do that.
I think they can do. Ms. Caitlin, do you wanna introduce yourself? Stand up and be loud and proud, sweetheart, because if you're going into education, you're gonna have to get used to it.
Woo-hoo!
Woo-hoo!
My name's Caitlin Clark. I'm a junior at Fanning County High School, and I'm looking to be a kindergarten teacher. I'm excited to start this project.
All right. Hollyanna? Is Hollyanna? Ah, there she is.
I'm calling this Hollyanna Green, and I'm a senior at Fanning County High School, and I plan to be a teacher when I graduate college, and I am very excited for this opportunity to start in the project.
And Ms. Baylor? Ms. Baylor didn't make it?
No, I don't see anybody.
I was like a certain...
Sorry, I am so sorry. I am so sorry, y'all. No, please don't. Y'all, by this tone, my, my blood sugar is gone. Gone, gone, gone. With that said, I think the good Lord's given me a lot of, um, practice and humility.
Are we, can we discuss since we're all together, stuff, or I don't know how that all works?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. What would you like to discuss, Mr. Patterson?
So, I guess I don't feel like I got enough information on the, the night school stuff, so... I wanna know like, a little bit more about that and, um, what our plans are to offset that, I guess.
Okay, can I do that in superintendent comments, Mr. Chair? Or do I need to do that in a, um, work session with the agenda item?
Well, you can do that in, in your closing comments. I, I think you have enough information that you want, can share with us.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
I can. All right. So with that said, then, um, personnel sheet is completed. And so with part of my superintendent comments, I just wanted to thank everyone for being here. Um, and before I get to night school, I did want to thank all of our teachers and employees for all that they do every day because they're actually leaders. They're not just working the job, but they're leading the future. And, um, I want to thank Ms., um, Arp, I can't, Ms. Erin, I'll never not call you Ms., so Ms. Arp, and, um, and Ms. Self for coming and advocating, and we've had the opportunity to talk. Um, so with the changes a couple of years ago, um, Dr. Ramsey came to us and wanted to start an alternative, um, program for our students to go to a non-traditional pathway for high school students. So, um, we started the Impact Center because at that time, Mountain Education Charter High School was changed to where it could be a standalone high school for students that were already grandfathered in, or they either had to, they couldn't go to a high school straight from us. They had, they could go to enroll in the program. Well, in order to enroll in the program, um, what we would do is our students would enroll, go to ME as a program. They would still be Fanning County students, but they would go to ME, which wasn't our teachers and wasn't our instructional program, but we were still responsible for the outcome, and then we paid ME to do the education. So with the Impact Center, it's a non-traditional route as well. They have online options. We don't have the night option, and we, Dr. Ramsey and I have talked about different avenues of way to get a night option for some students. It is during the day. Um, so our students, the, when they requested, when students requested a non-traditional route, instead of us just sending them straight to Mountain Ed, to the program, which would not be our teacher, I mean, we wouldn't have control, for lack of the better word, or oversight over the program, which they do a phenomenal job, they had to, um, we requested that they tried Impact Center first. If Impact Center didn't work, then they could go on to, um, Mountain Education. And I think we've had quite five students, maybe, I can't quote, it's either five or six. I don't have it right in, um, front of me, to go over the past two years that, that Mountain, that our Impact Center didn't work for them. So, um, that's how that worked that way. So, and if they're in the Impact Center, they can still participate in any extracurricular activities, um, of our high school, and it does require one more credit than Mountain Education does to graduate.
And due to the fact that there was low participation after the Impact Center, that caused Mountain to pull out?
That is correct, and one of the things, what is, we did ask that students go to Impact Center first, to try that first, and if they weren't successful there, then they would go on. And then there were some, if, if students withdrew, there's age requirements in the law, and I cannot quote all of that without it in front of me, without misspeaking. Um, but if they were, if students had enrolled in another, we call it LEA, another school, then they could, there was an avenue to go to ME as well. So it got very convoluted there at the end. And then when we got together looking at the trends that were happening, we knew that we needed something in place to take care of kids that needed a non-traditional way 'cause the, they're right, not, one size doesn't fit all when you're talking about human beings.
So, so MEC is the one that doesn't want to, wanna, uh, have anything with Fanning County anymore?
Well, it, it's hard, it's not, they're a great partnership, and I've talked with, um, Mr. Stan Davis, who is the superintendent of MEC, and like, they would still be there for us if we had a kid that we absolutely couldn't get another option, we could, they'll still be there to work with us. They're just not gonna be physically located on our campus anymore.
On their own account?
Yes, sir. Yes, I mean, they, situation deemed itself, they couldn't, I mean, they've got a campus at Gilmer and Union and here.
So does Gilmer or Union have an Impact Center like we do?
The Union has a success center. It's not exactly like what we have, but it's very similar. I don't know how they wrote, I have not talked to Mr. Hill to know exactly how those go together. And I don't know if Dr. Ramsey has any more information about surrounding systems or...
No, I don't know the differences.
Well, do you want to speak on the Impact Center at all, or anything?
I can. Uh, you know, like you said, the Impact Center was started when the legislation was so uncertain about what, moving forward with MEC at the time, and is now ME. I worked at MEC for seven years, loved it, served a great...
Amen.
Kids were, their kids walking around Fanning County High School diploma would not happen without MEC. When the legislation changed, it became more and more difficult for kids to go. And our Impact Program, we put that in place. Uh, we actually went and visited, we, we looked at different schools, went and visited schools that had this in place, to provide that option for students, and it's not just, we have students who are in Impact who won't, they're going to work, right, and no matter what, they're going to work when they turn eighteen. We won't be able to go to work from the high school to home. Uh, we have students in Impact who were behind. And, and in my time at MEC, I can tell you the majority of the kids at MEC give it up in the high school. Not all of them, but a lot of them. So, so the majority of our kids, and I guess probably is given to kids who are behind and who aren't gonna graduate on time necessarily without some help from a non-traditional program. And that's what Impact has been. You know, obviously, there are situations where it can coexist. I don't believe the numbers right now support it for ME. I know that their numbers are down. But, but from the flip side of that is we've not had a lot of requests to go to ME. And, and like Ms. Duff said, the only thing we ever said was try Impact first because of the fact that you were going to ME as a appropriate student. Initially, I know the laws changed, but to be able to help with this, initially, uh, you couldn't go there until you were eighteen as a standalone school.
Once it's, everything's switched. It got very convoluted there for just a minute.
And then if you were under eighteen, and, and I, I think even at eighteen, at the time, you had to stay out of nine weeks, right? Be late, it's a dropout before you can go back to ME as a standalone student. So still, it was a dropout to Fanning County, even if they went back and finished their high school diploma at MEC. That was initially, I think they lowered maybe that age to seventeen, is that correct? But the issue came about when legislation changed, and it kind of forced our hand to be able to offer an alternative to students who were struggling to graduate on time.
And, and when we started Impact, it was in, by no means to be in competition with Mountain Ed. We've always had a wonderful working agreement, I mean, relationship. We still have a great relationship with Mr. Davis and Joe Cash, and I say Joe Cash a lot because he's with so many different regions, and Joe works a lot with us. He's assistant superintendent. I don't know his official title, but that's what, um, he is. So, um, I mean, we've got a wonderful relationship with them. They've helped us figure out when we have just, we have one kid that we absolutely, neither one of us could find a perfect solution for him, so we worked together. But, and it just boils down to, when that legislation changed, we got nervous about taking care of our own kids because we didn't want something to happen to not have a non-traditional route. Again, I will say, and I was talking to these ladies in private, I've also said that, yes, the one thing that we're missing is, well, I mean, we couldn't do all resources, but we do need a night option, and we're working on how to...
We got, we gotta have a night option.
To do that most fiscally. Well, and we're going through, you gotta make sure how the credits work and all that stuff, but I have a team, like Ms. Jenny's team is working to help figure that out right now of how we can still, you know...
How many, uh, how many students we got in the MEC right now?
ME, we don't have, we don't have any enrolled...
No.
In ME. I don't know how many is enrolled as high school students, as their students.
Let me, let me ask that question. So if we have a student that knows right off the head that they want to work during the day and then go to MEC at night, and so obviously, the Impact Center's not gonna work for them. Do we recommend them, which would keep them as us? Or do we kind of put them into the category of them having to unenroll, which then makes them have no students?
To, I think it was last year that we let two students that had that situation go. Yeah.
Two students last year who absolutely had to work during the day, they went to ME.
So we encouraged it.
All we ever said was...
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
So we encouraged it.
You, you worked with both of them to let them go?
Both those students, yeah. They, they, they were able to be able...
That's only two I can think of off the top of my head.
But all I, all we ever said was to anybody was try Impact if it works. Because again, there, there's been, from the legislation, there's been a lot of uncertainty on what...
Well, and, and back from that, too, if you're, I, y'all think about, and this is no slight to ME, to Mr. Tickler, to anybody that instructs ME or whatever, but if you're still held accountable for something, which we are still held accountable for the progress of that student, if I'm held accountable for it, then I want to have the option to have the control over what I'm responsible for.
I get that, but in the, in the whole scheme of things, none of that matters. What matters is, is if somebody needs to go to night school, is there an opportunity there for them? You don't take an opportunity away from any, not even one student in our county. That's where I'm at, and I, that's why I'm trying to figure this all out because I don't know enough about it, but we, we can't not have an option for that.
Right, they can still have an opportunity to attend ME. They just physically won't be at our school anymore. I mean, at the high, I mean, they physically won't have staff there. So we are working...
I guess what I'm saying, we gotta have something in place of it that is here.
Correct. Well, that's what I'm saying. We've been working to try to fiscally, and not only fiscally, you gotta make it fit with state reporting and blocks and all that kind of stuff. So, and Jenny and her team are already working with the state of Georgia to see when we can offer credits, does time of day matter? Do we have to be a separate alternative program? So we've got to answer all those questions before we can just, and we're in the process of answering those questions.
I just feel like it should already been answered if like, run into Impact and that's, that option's leaving for them here, it should already been handled.
Well, at the time, we had ME for the night option.
And now we don't.
Right.
So, how long is that gonna take to figure out, you think?
It would probably, I don't see us being able to start it before next semester, which would be at the end of December. I mean, it would take us that long to get it set up, get special course codes, um, loaded in, find somebody to teach it, those kind of things.
I apologize. I just don't...
Oh, don't apologize.
While, while we're having discussions, I'd like to have, uh, ask a question for a couple of points of clarity.
Uh-huh.
We didn't ask ME to leave.
No.
It's a financial decision on ME's behalf. They, they don't have enough students in there. The, we extended the invitation them to use our facilities, and that invitation is still open.
Correct.
Am I correct on all that?
Yes, sir. I can't speak for fiscal based, I would rather Mr. Davis state his specific reasons why, but... So... No, that's what I'm here for, is question, I mean...
Yeah, well, I just, you know, what really boils down to is you gotta have something there.
Right.
So...
So...
Okay, are you finished with your comments?
No, I want to say I thank each of y'all, and I appreciate you, I really do. I appreciate each of you, and I appreciate everyone here tonight. Now I'm finished.
You're finished now?
Mic drop.
So I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Mr. Patterson go first then. He's already warm, he's already warmed up.
I did. I don't really have much to say. I got a couple of notes. Thank you to our veterans. Um, I, I'm really, um, glad to see the involvement that they're pulling together and, um, that it's been a, a lack of cooperation there for some time. And, um, thank them for coming in and teaching our students and our kids the importance of our, of our flag and, and all the things they're doing in our schools. Uh, they're getting to be a lot more active in our community, and, um, I see them around, and I just want them to know that I appreciate them taking their time. They don't have to do that. And, um, but it is very much appreciated. Uh, thank you Jackie and Erin for coming and, and speaking, wanting to do whatever it takes for us to have opportunities for our kids. Uh, bottom line, I don't care about all the other stuff. That can all be worked out, but I do care about the kids and them having the opportunity. Anybody that don't like that, I hate it for you, but it just is what it is. Um, thank you Darren for making everything happen over at the baseball field, getting them squared away. Piece of mind on that. And, um, just a quick shout out, uh, to Johnson Paving. I know they get paid to do everything they do, but they always go above and beyond, um, because they are vested in our community, and they always go above and beyond and do a lot of extra for us. And I just wanted to publicly say thank you to them, so that's it. That's all I got. Thank everybody else, uh, and Mark, thank you, brother. That's all I got.
Ms. Weeks?
Um, I just want to say thank you to all of our staff, um, all of our SROs for, uh, taking care of, educating, and protecting our students and staff day in, day out. Um, it is so very important. Um, I'll back up to what we went over earlier, like with milestones and the testing and stuff. Uh, of course, I'm very excited that those are on the rise, but as you said, it's far more important to realize the, the importance of the whole child and the whole classroom. Um, I know me personally, uh, Jackie would know this very well, but we graduated together. I'm not the best test taker, but I always had good grades in the process. So, um, I think valuing that singular tests don't necessarily tell the story of the individual child, nor the individual abilities of our educators as well. So I like that we value that just as much, or maybe more importantly, the milestone score. Uh, Mr. Young, thank you for your presentation for Blue Ridge Elementary. Um, y'all doing a great job over there. Uh, thank you to, um, the parents, Ms. Self and Ms. Arp. Um, I think it's important to come and speak. Um, I think advocating for your child and other people's children in this community is, is, is critical for the success of this community in general. Um, I just think it's important to stand up for what you believe in and voice your opinions, so I really appreciate y'all being here and doing that. Um, and that's it for me tonight. I appreciate everybody that's here.
Mr. Bourne?
Thank you to everybody. We're a little over a month in school. Uh, everybody's back situated. Uh, again, thanks to the SROs. I know this year, uh, and, and the staff, school staff, this year's been a little bit different with the implementation of our, um, weapons detection system, but I've heard great things in our community. I'm very proud that we, um, that we did that. I'm very proud of our, uh, staff for going the extra mile and working that. So, um, I appreciate all the good work there. Mr. Young, it's great to hear what Blue Ridge... Mr. Young, it's great to hear what Blue Ridge is doing, love to see you in the bumblebee seat next time. But what really strikes out, struck out to me is the community partnership that we have. And that's not only for Blue Ridge, but for every school in our community, we have a wonderful community partnership. And that, I believe that just, that goes a long way to the success of our schools from, from the little guys, kindergarten all the way through, it's very good. So if anybody's here or anybody's watching, that supports us in that community partnership aspect, thank you for that. Jackie and Erin, thank you for coming and speaking. I can assure you, we all have the same goal in mind, and that's to educate our kids. We'll continue to work on good solutions for all of our kids. And the three, excuse me, the two girls and one boy that.
Thank you, Mr. Bourne.
That are gonna be involved in that, in that program, proud of you guys. Look forward to seeing you guys back in the system in several years from now, so. What's that? Yeah, Baylor's a really little guy, if you guys don't know him, he's. Thank you all, thank you all for the hard work, I appreciate you all, thank you.
That's what happens when you don't come.
Mr. Beard?
Well, I'm gonna make it really, really long. Ditto to what's already been said. I appreciate the weapons system we got in place, I think it's gonna be a lot on our safety. I'm looking forward to our training going into our schools, that's always a big plus for me. Thank everybody for being here.
Awesome. Yeah, I wanna thank the SROs for all that they do, there's such an important job, especially with the things going around our country today. I wanna, you know, remember Charlie Kirk for what he does, what he did, and please pray for his family. Principals, I wanna thank you for what you do. And I made a comment last month that they left out of here laughing when I talked about the baby coming out head first. Let me talk about that a minute, without going back to that. The fact is, if you have anxiety, you're never gonna get out of anxiety till you come out of it in your head first. Y'all get that? If you're gonna get financially out of debt, you gotta get out of it in your head before you ever get out of it out here in front of you. So that was my comment, but the fact is, we have great principals, you know why? Because everything runs from the head down. So the things that are you, you're doing at your school with Mr. Young and Ms. Danner, Ms. April, the things that you do, it sorta shines out by what your school is actually doing. It goes to the nutrition department, Ms. Williams, and what you do and your character, everything about you oozes out even from those new ladies we just saw, because I believe that, I believe that oil runs downhill. Don't just happen in the Bible, it runs down the head, all the way to the bottom. And so we have excellent leadership, I didn't leave you out, Mr. Ramsey, you, y'all are great. And I appreciate that. And I would like to fight for you, I have, I have in the past, because I have a kid that dropped out of that. And he was in it, and he dropped out, and then finally his mama told me to leave him alone. But we've been, my wife, that's my wife right over here, we've been involved in it around the state. She would go and talk to those at night, and talk to them about real estate, and she was in interior design. She had, we went to a county where they had six black boys. She said, "Do you wanna do real estate?", they said, "No." "Do you wanna do interior design?", they said, "No." Said, "What do you like to do?", "We work on cars", she said, "Good, let's talk about that." "You sell time, you gotta value your time, what do you do?", "What do you like to do on the car?" She starts giving them pathways from my own experience. So she starts telling them how to sell their time, "Don't just be doing it for your buddies, your time is valuable, they don't make in more time, you gotta get paid for your time." And so we have, I have spoken to her, I've spoken to the principal we had. And, and the fact is that kids that went to the Impact Center just didn't choose to go on. And, or to leave that and to go into MEC, and so now as a result, MEC has pulled out. And so I think it's great, because we have seen in Bowman, Georgia, where kids, they, they absolutely have to work to take care of their grandparents that they're living with, because the grandparents need medical attention, you see what I'm saying? So I'm a fan, I want you to know that, I just don't know how we're going to work that out. But a, as you hear the heart of this place here, we want something to happen, I just don't know what that is right now. So let us, let us soundboard, get our minds together, and I, I hope that out of the heart, the issues flow. We can get our mind to go forward and to wrap our heads around something that's gonna be able to help you, because I wanna help those kids, I don't wanna see the young man that dropped out of MEC, I didn't wanna see that. Cause he needs his diploma, and I'm trying to tell him, you need that diploma, I don't care what you do, you need a diploma. And so that's where my heart is, I don't wanna go on, I know we've been here a while, but I just want you to know, we, we feel you, and we wanna do something, and I'm not sure what that is, but I think we'll put our heads together and try to figure that out. And so with that said, if there's no more, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second, they got a second, all in favor, it is unanimous, we are adjourned.